Please respond by stating present, Councilmember Ronay.
Present.
Foberg. Lee Belt. Ward.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
E Konger.
Present.
Nielsen.
Present.
Norv Strop.
Present.
Mayor Shoneman.
Present. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a free country, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, the intended purpose of this session will be to discuss the water and sewer rate study update. We've got a couple of guests here, welcome. Good to see you again. Got our documents in front of us, so I guess I'll just kick things off to you. It seems like you probably know what to do.
Water and wastewater. And so with me today is Jessica Weinkopf, and she has been with Banner about five years, in the industry about eight. And so we just want to walk through the study that's been recently done, give the council some information, help you understand what rates are being recommended and why. And so the last rate study was completed just last year in 2024. And since that time, there's been a number of changes of the capital improvement plan. Additional information has been presented, and there's also been some staff changes. And so with all of that kind of coming together, it made sense to do an update to that study and revise what was recommended previously. And so we're here today to go through that. And one thing I want to highlight as we get started is each of these departments, the water department and the sewer department are enterprise funds. And so what that means is they are intended to be self-funding. The rates that come in, the charges for the water and the sewer services are intended then to fund each department individually. So historically, there's been some transfers from the general fund into the water and sewer capital, or into the waters and sewer departments. And so one of the goals that has been established for the study is to try to eliminate or phase out those transfers and have those departments become self-funding. So we're going to go into that in a little more detail. We'll start off with the water study and how that was completed and the recommendations. So first of all, this shows you just the percentage of water use that each class uses. And so there's two classes right now, the residential class and what's called the commercial class. The commercial class includes both commercial and industrial type customers, and they comprise most of the water, more than half of the water use, around 56%.
Can we ask questions if you want to wait till a good break?
Thank you. We would welcome questions at any time. So interrupt, throw your hand out. Hopefully you don't have to jump up and down, but yes.
Well, with that, then I'll ask the 66% commercial, 44% residential. Is that consistent with other communities that you've done, or can you comment on that?
You know, each community is unique. We have some smaller communities we've done studies for in South Dakota that have a large industrial presence. And so, you know, I've done studies where half of the flow in the community is industrial, and the rest is made up of commercial and residential usage. There's been other communities where they don't have much industry, so most of the usage is residential and commercial. So it's really, it's individual, based on what the community structure is like and its users.
Tanya, if I may, what is the current daily water usage in Aberdeen as we look at this pie chart?
Oh, um, we didn't look at it on a daily basis, that's why I'm pausing. But on the annual basis, we were around 900 million on an annual basis, I'm pretty sure, which, let me look quick what that equates out to. Four million a day at the water plant. So that would be a typical non-irrigation type use. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Thanks for fielding those questions, Tanya. Back to you.
No problem at all. So we sat down with staff with the city and looked at the capital improvement plan for the next five years. And a significant amount of time was spent on this, kind of evaluating these projects to determine what is really needed to be able to maintain the system, maintain the treatment facility, maintain the distribution system, and the meter replacement project that's going on, trying to determine, you know, had this not be excessively high in costs, but be able to keep the infrastructure that the city's already invested so much in, in good working order. And so this is what was arrived at. And so it varies in costs from anywhere around, you know, two and a half million a year to upwards of almost 5.8 million a year over this five-year period. The one thing you'll notice at the end in 2030, and I think I can point on this overhead, but that last line in 2030, there's an item for 2.8 million, 8 million, and that is anticipating that there's either going to be some type of improvements needed at the treatment facility or some other type of major improvement coming up, which will need to be funded. And so it's planning ahead so that the rates are being increased now to prepare for that and so that the city would be able to fund that in 2030. So I won't read through all these, but just it's a, that is the list that was prepared and identified as a need. Next, we're going to look at the overall water department expenses, and this is representative of what the annual expenses would be and where those costs are. They're spread out over various areas, from chemicals and pumping to staff salary payments. The larger other current expenses that appears kind of vague, that is comprised mainly of equipment and maintenance items that are purchased, as well as the insurance for the buildings and other vehicles and things that are used by the department. And then finally, professional services that might be needed to be hired to implement things or run SCADA or hire engineering services, things like that, so. So in order to determine the rates, the industry generally uses the recommendations of the American Waterworks Association. That's a national organization that has published recommendations for how those rates should be designed. We use the base extra method, and so what that means is you can think of base capacity as what the average day demand is on the water system, or what the average day water usage is. So costs assigned to meeting those average day needs. That extra capacity method, that's the amount of funds or resources required to meet kind of that peak day need. And so the thought is, how much do you have to oversize the system for the demands that customers place on those peak days when there's a lot of irrigation going on, you know, high summer water usage? And then other costs are assigned to areas such as billing and fire collection, or fire protection and administrative costs. If you think of costs where, you know, somebody's got to determine what each customer should pay, send those bills out, make sure they're collected, there's that whole component of the service that's being provided. And then also meters and services, just are meters need to be replaced, do they need to be maintained? So there's that component. When we look at the per thousand gallon rate, that base extra method, and those costs are used to generate what the per thousand gallon rate should be, and then the meter services and the billing collection percentages, those are used to determine what the monthly customer charge should be. So that kind of base fee everybody pays every month, plus the per thousand gallon rate. So looking at this then, and looking at the residential commercials and the commercial customers, we were able to say on the maximum day, the residential class, because of the irrigation demands placed on the system, they use about 50% of the system, whereas the commercial only uses 44. And that's further kind of exemplified, there's a thing in the AWWA method called a capacity factor, and the higher the capacity factor is, the more the demand is placed on the system. So we use that as well. And in looking at the revenue requirements, we would, the study would say that about 60% or 57.9% of the revenue should be coming from the residential customers. But as you can see below that right now, the current revenue is only around 54%. Likewise, it's flipped a little bit for commercial, the revenue requirement should be around 42% of revenue should be coming from the commercial class, but current revenues exceed that by about 45.7%. So kind of looking at who's placing the bigger demand on the system, causing it to have to be slightly overbuilt or built big enough to meet those peak needs, and how much revenue is being generated from each class. This cost of service study would generally indicate that the residential rate should go up more than the commercial rates to be able to meet that service. Now, this is not, you know, directly implemented, but it serves as a guide when setting the rates. One other method of being able to, to look at this would be looking at an irrigation rate and putting an irrigation rate on that residential class, so that they would be charged more when they're, for that irrigation usage. So you'd be able to recover that maximum day cost to that irrigation rate. We're going to talk more about that in just a minute. So I kind of went through some of this already, that the residential, basically residential and commercial class is insufficient to meet the cash needs. And so coming out of the cost of service, a usage rate of $7.19 was recommended for that monthly customer charge, just looking at the lower, smaller meters, 5/8 inch to 1 and 1/2, a monthly customer charge of 23.67 per month was recommended.
Could you tell us what that stands at currently?
Currently, that rate is $4.45 for the per thousand gallon rate. And for just the smaller meters, that 5/8 inch to 1 quarter, it is currently $20.32.
And we had a pretty substantial rate increase last year. Do you have records of what it was prior to 2025?
I do. I can grab those quick. You looking for the per thousand gallon rate?
Yeah, just to kind of, yeah, I think that that would be helpful.
In 2024, the rate was 15, yeah, a lot of rate, $15 for that customer service charge, and the usage rate was $3.90 for a thousand gallon.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Push the button. So now that we've talked through kind of the cost of service for that water, we looked at multiple goals for the study. We sat down with city staff and talked through, what are we trying to accomplish? So like Tanya had mentioned earlier, we want the water department to be self-funded. So these first two here, increasing to be able to pay for those capital improvements, as well as eliminating those transfers in that Tanya had mentioned. Those were a couple of the goals here. Another one Tanya had mentioned is creating an irrigation rate for those high irrigation users. The other ones we were looking at is target for the cash reserves at the end of the study period. We originally had a goal of 80% when we started this study, but once we saw the rate increases needed to hit that percentage, we did drop it down to 70. Now typically throughout the industry, the range that we would see for that percentage is between 40 and 130%. So this 70% goal is kind of middle ground of what we would typically see for this. Another goal for this is to exceed the 1.1 coverage ratio requirement. This requirement comes from Danner and the Funding Agency for any funded projects that you guys would need to do. They need you to be able to prove that you can pay back 1.1 of whatever you are getting funded. So we wanted to make sure we could exceed that for you, and then implementing any of those cost of service findings that we had. So with those goals, we came up with two options. The first one that we came up with implements the cost of service findings that Tanya had gone through earlier. This includes a steady annual increase for the monthly customer service charge, but a higher increase percentage on that usage rate. This option meets the 70% cash reserve goal that I mentioned. It is able to fund the improvements and meets that 1.1 service ratio. Option two is that uniform percent increase for the monthly service charge and usage rate. So both of those would have the same increase each year, but not, like every year is not going to be exactly the same. So you're not going to see like 10% every single year. It'll be 10 on both of them for one year, and you know, whatever it is, we'll look at the actual percentages in a couple of slides. So that was the second option. That again achieves the, you know, being able to fund your projects, the 70% cash reserves goal, the 1.1 ratio. One thing that we, neither of these options look at the irrigation rate that we were hoping to because of the way that the customer classes are structured. Right now, you have both, you know, residential, like, single-family homes and your multifamily, big apartment complexes in that same customer class. So it's really difficult to put a line in there and say, you know, this amount of gallons is your standard, and that's what your rate will be, and anybody over that's going to pay that higher rate. Well, your apartment buildings would always be higher than your standard family home. So we weren't able to achieve that goal with these rates. Let's look at what these rates are actually going to look like. So here, as we had mentioned, the usage rate for 2025 is that $4.45 for residential and your lower commercial users. We do have here shown on the second line is the ratio that we use to calculate the rates for the higher blocks. These ratios were determined in the previous study, and we were able to maintain them for this study. So option one, the cost of service findings, your 2026 usage rate for residential and those lower users would increase to $5.25, going up to $8.30 in 2030. Option two has the 2026 rates going up to $5.15 and then up to $7.45 in 2030. Now that is just the per thousand gallon rate. This next one here shows that monthly base charge that you would see. So that top line again is the 2020, or 2025 rates. That base charge for the smaller meters, which is your residential section, right now is 2032, like we mentioned earlier. With option one, your 2026 rates would go up to $21.55 and then going up to $27.20 in 2030. Option two, in 2026, you'd be at $23.40, going up to $33.95 in 2030. Here you can see those percentages that we use to calculate those rates. So this again is just for that usage per gallon, or per thousand gallons rate. You can see that option one has the cost of service, you know, we needed this rate to be a little bit higher. And option two is even all the way across, which you can also see in the next slide where we look at the increased percentages that we used for the base rate. So in option two, you can see we used 15.2, 15, 10, so on. Those are the same as the usage rate increases. So that's where that uniform rate increase name comes from. And then option one here just has a steady increase to make sure you keep up your costs for your meters for the monthly customer service charge. We know there is a potential for a large water project coming up. Tanya had mentioned that. This addresses the potential web collaboration project, or it's also called the WINS project, because there's still a lot of unknowns with this project. It was not included in the capital improvements plan, like by name. We do have that, the potential for a project in 2030, but we wanted to address this one specifically. We, the plan for this project would be completed after this study period as well. So we used the 2030 proposed or calculated water usage to come up with these potential rating increases. And you can see per $10 million project cost, what those rate increases on the thousand gallon, per thousand gallon rate would be. You're about 47 cents per $10 million worth of project. But the project cost for that is still unknown. So we gave you, or we are showing a range of impacts, so you guys can see what's coming up. Next, we'll look at some of the cash charts. Here is the end-of-year cash. So these dark columns here, the darkest ones are if you left your rates alone, no rate increases for the next five years, how would the cash for the water department look? And you can see the revenue is insufficient, as Tanya had mentioned. And the two options that we are proposing are fairly similar, but you can see how they do affect the cash a little differently. Next is the cash reserves. So right now, your cash reserves in 2025 are around $6 million. You can see with the current rates, which again is that dark color, your reserves drop off significantly. It's not sustainable. And so the two proposed options are fairly even and both end up just over $6.5 million at the end of the study period for reserves. Here we'll look at what a customer bill would look like and how these rates would change those. So this first one is a single-user residential. You know, the young, single person who just bought their first home, or the single elderly person living alone. With your current rates, you can see you're kind of middle compared to some of the other cities in the state. And even with these rate increases, you're still right in the middle of the pack for those rates. The next one is the typical residential, like your family, a four-person family, that, any household, essentially. So you can see here, your current rates are in probably the bottom third, and the rate increases proposed, whether it's option one or option two, bring you up to the middle of the pack. Next is a typical commercial user. Your rates right now are the lowest in this comparison for most of the major cities in the state. And with those rate increases, And with those rate increases, you end up right in the middle. And for the larger industries in town, the current rates are fairly low. You're almost the lowest um in this comparison of those large cities in the state. And with these increases, you end up roughly around the middle.
So if you'd be so kind as to dial back a couple of slides, go back one.
Absolutely.
No problem. So what I'd like to do is point out just for a moment, the Aberdeen Current, this is big industrial users. We're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars for Aberdeen. We're looking at about a hu- twice that, a hundred ninety-three thousand for Sioux Falls. Now go back a couple more slides.
Are you looking for residential?
I am. And see, Sioux Falls is on the low end of the spectrum, thirty-eight, thirty-six dollars. And then we are higher um considerably. So why is it that uh Sioux Falls charges so much more for industrial?
So there's two, well, I I'm gonna answer that twofold. First of all, why are they so low for residential? Um, there's two things going on. Sioux Falls buys their water from Lewis and Clark. And Lewis and Clark has been heavily federally subsidized. So the costs that they've had to pay to obtain treated drinking water is relatively lower than many other communities have. So there's that going forward, which is why part of the reason why they can charge residential less. I don't have information on exactly how their study was performed, but it definitely appears like they are heavily subsidizing residential customers with higher commercial and industrial charges. I know their their per month cost, just that base charge for residential is around six dollars. And I don't know how you could have staff to do the billing and the collection and send out the invoices, even get some of that stuff done and offer fire protection hardly for that six dollar cost. So it appears that they're, you know, they're subsidizing.
And the reason I I wanted to point out those two in particular was because on slide five, you had made mention that you'd like to see a larger increase for the residences versus commercial.
So that's on the cost of service basis. It shows that it's that irrigation rate. Or that irrigation demand, that max day demand. And so when you're looking at rate increases to fund these capital improvements and looking at that, the reason for why it looks like residential should be charged more. I think the thought is the best way to implement that in the most fair and equitable way would be to try to develop some kind of irrigation rate. But the other thing, when you look at the overall cost that needs to be paid by both residential and commercial users to fund the cost of service. It was around that seven dollars and seventeen cents is what everybody should be paying. And so the idea there is that everybody's cost needs to come up. And because that per thousand gallon rate needs to come up, it's gonna end up, you know, having the commercial and the industrial classes in Aberdeen be impacted a little bit more. So I get where that is kind of a confusing message, but I think long-term, the best thing to do would be if Aberdeen could segregate out some of those larger apartment buildings. So that you wouldn't be charging them an irrigation rate year-round. And then establish an irrigation rate for some of the residential customers. That would be a a fair way of recovering some of those needed.
So explain the irrigation rate system basically takes your average use and then charges you an increased rate on the above-average use that you would see over the summer months?
Close. It looks at your winter usage. So not your average use, but it looks at the winter usage and what is the winter usage for most of your customers. And then how do we see that usage increase during the summer months? So you can tell what water those customer classes are using for irrigation. And then it charges a higher per thousand gallon rate during, for those higher blocks.
And why the distinction for commercial, um, excuse me, multifamily residences?
It appears when we looked at the winter, so we had staff break out the usage blocks for like zero to ten thousand gallons, ten thousand to twenty. We looked at the amount of usage in each of those blocks for the residential class. And you would expect that during the winter months, it would drop off to zero in those higher usage blocks. And we still saw usage of over sixty thousand gallons per day for some customers in the residential group. The names of many of those customers appear to be apartment buildings. And so the high usage during the winter months, plus just the names of some of the the customers led to us kind of inferring that, okay, there's some larger apartments. And if you develop an irrigation rate, those larger apartment buildings would pay a higher usage rate year-round. Does that answer your question?
Oh, I might ask for further clarification in a little bit. I'll let you continue on if you're.
Okay, please do if anything's not making sense. Or if we can explain it another way as well. Um, the one other thing I want to touch on before we jump into sewer, and I also want to open it up for any other questions on the water study, is um I know affordability is also often a concern. That's why we included that graph that showed that thousand gallon per month user for that small, maybe elderly, single person. Um, or another single household that has low water usage is maybe on a fixed income. Um, EPA has published numerous documents on affordability. And in looking that at that, kind of the general recommendation is that water rates should not exceed one and a half to three percent of median household income. Likewise, sewer rates by themselves should not exceed one and a half to three percent of median household income. And we looked up Aberdeen's median household income, most recently is listed on South Dakota G O D, was sixty-six thousand dollars. I think sixty-six thousand eight dollars. Um, and if you look at that on a percentage basis with the rates on the water rate right now for that five thousand gallon customer, that would be point eight nine percent. So we are well below that one and a half threshold. And they even say that, you know, anything below one percent is considered an affordable water rate. So if that can can provide at least some some additional information when you're thinking about that type of a customer in fixed income um households, where you're at. So I can provide that percentage too when we get into the sewer rates. So before we go into the sewer rates, are there any other questions on the water study? You could certainly ask again at the end, so if something else comes to mind.
Could you run that irrigation rate past me again? How how exactly that works? That's an increased rate?
Yeah, so let me, I'm gonna.
What was it applying to to individual customers specifically, or was it? Uh, you said something about a class of customer and I I wasn't sure then.
So there's a, we call it a residential class, uh, class of customers. So you have different classes of customers. Aberdeen has residential and commercial. So within that residential class, the average usage per month is around five thousand gallons for all the customers. And with an irrigation rate, what you do is typically, you know, you would say like for all usage, up to ten thousand gallons a month. Everybody's gonna pay that recommended rate um of, I want to flip back to it, what do we have? Yes, we could explain it that way. That would be good. Whoops. So, but I want to get to the actual dollars. Yeah, okay.
So essentially, the thing that taken me off track a little bit was, I was under the assumption that we would, that that would be based on the the individual parcels usage for that, for that particular property. But you're saying it's just as an aggregate?
No, each each fee, so it would be based on the metered water use for that customer. That's, that would, it would depend on how much that meter used that month on if they would pay a higher rate. So if you.
No, no, but like, let's say that there's an old woman that lives by herself and she uses very little water. If she uses more than her own average, it gets kicked into irrigation rates, or she's got to use more than the city average.
Yeah. So if you look at right now in the commercial, do you see how you have different rate blocks? Zero to six million is in the four dollar and forty-five cent per thousand gallon. If a customer uses more than six million gallons a month, then they pay four seventy. And if they would use more than nine million, they'd pay four ninety-three per thousand gallons. So this is what's called an increasing block rate structure for this higher usage. And so we would create a similar type of thing for residential, but the blocks would be much smaller and it would only apply to residential customers. So for example, if a residential customer used more than ten thousand gallons, let's say, in a month. So then they would pay above ten thousand gallons, they would pay a higher rate.
Right.
And then, you know, you could even set it up where you maybe have a ten thousand to twenty thousand. So if a customer used more than twenty thousand, they would pay an even higher rate. So the customers that are placing that summer irrigation demand on the system would pay a premium for the availability of that service.
And that's where that multifamily comes in too, because if you have one meter for an apartment building, they're always going to be in that twenty, thirty, forty thousand gallons block. And so to keep them in the same class and do that increasing block rate, they would always be paying that higher rate.
Right. No, I understand the distinction now. I just thought that it was more tailored invoicing system than than what you're alluding to here.
Yeah, and that is one thing we would need to work with staff on, because right now the classes aren't there and the billing software is not set up for it. And so there would be, I think this is more of a long-term goal to consider that irrigation rate. It's not something they've recommended to be implemented in the next year. Any other questions on the water study at all right now? All right, I'll go into the sewer and there'll be a chance for more questions again at the end. But when I'm going through the sewer, if at any point you have questions, please don't hesitate to ask.
Would that that irrigation rate only be applied during summer months, or would it be applied?
It would be applied year-round, but but no, really, nobody should fall into an irrigation rate during winter months, because it should be set up where that no customer is using that much during the winter months. Cause it would only apply to the residential class and their usage should always be less.
Sure.
So it would not change the rates on the commercial side for the increasing blocks. Those would stay as shown and recommended. Those are already part of the system and already implemented.
Right, okay.
Irrigation? It's becoming, it's become more common over the years to have that irrigation rate, just because there is a cost to oversized towers and plants and everything else to meet those peak needs. And so this is a way that those customers that are requesting that service are helped to pay for it.
We could make the changes with our existing software. It's just that with our data set, we don't distinguish between commercial and residential. They're in the same bucket. So we physically have to touch all of those accounts to break them apart. Uh, it'll be a very labor-intensive process. Um, there may be some way to automate it, but we're largely touching and separating accounts as far as I'm aware. And also with that, building the classes, the data set. So yes, we have the capacity. Yes, we have the capability, but it's going to take some work, some time and some effort.
Is this something that needs to be done at some point regardless, just for?
This has been something we've looked at before and have wanted to do. We discussed it, I believe, last year within our rate study as well. It's just it's a, it's a large task. Um, it's something that we didn't have the staff time for this year in the midst of a software migration. So it's something we definitely need to do, but again, we just need to have the resources and time available to do so.
Thank you, Jordan. Tanya, back to you.
All right. So let's, we'll dive into the sewer study. We're going to go through the same format um with the information we'll be providing. So on the sewer side, um, we have what appears to be three customer classes here. The residential customer class, the commercial customer class, and we do have a large industrial customer. Um, note that that is just one of your industrial customers. That customer has a separate sewer meter. And so um we were able to obtain that meter usage because it's so significant and show it here in this study. So um I just don't want to offer any confusion that um on the billing and software side that Jordan works with, that industrial customer would be included in the commercial. So um, but similar breakout, generally about thirty-six percent for residential and the rest being commercial and industrial. Again, at that same meeting, we went through the capital improvement needs with staff and they took a hard look at things. Um, capital improvement needs vary anywhere from a million dollars in twenty twenty-six up to eight point five million dollars in twenty thirty. Um, part of the thing that was programmed in here, or part of two significant projects that were programmed in here is the east side trunk sewer and listation improvements, which is very needed. That is planned for the project occurring and repayment on a loan for that project beginning in twenty thirty. That's the three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. And then also the phase two wastewater treatment facility improvements are planned in here. And so that two point, or that two million dollars in twenty thirty is that loan repayment. And so it's important to note these capital improvement needs because they really dictated the direction of the study. In the sense that the study was really, the study's goal was to be able to cash flow these in twenty thirty. And so that altered the direction we had to take a little bit, but puts the city in a good place to be able to have the time to plan and prepare for those upcoming improvements by acting now. So when we look at typical annual expenses for the sewer department, it's similar. Um, there's a number of expenses related to staff and salary time, and then also just debt repayment for existing loans. As well as other current expenses for similar things as in water, maintenance, equipment, insurance and personnel, so or professional services. For the cost of service analysis that's done on the sewer side, that is approached very differently from the water side. We're not looking at average day and max capacity anymore. We're looking at the actual treatment processes from the, you know, volume or collection side through the treatment process. And each of those components and what they do. And so we've got most of those components listed out here and we've allocated the cost to those various components. So things like the preliminary treatment and the clarifiers. They actually have a a purpose and a need in providing the treatment. And so that's how the costs were allocated. Um, I do want counsel to know too, we took a hard look and talked with staff um and dove into some of the expenses, looking at what type of personnel costs there are and how those, that staff spends their time in these various areas, as well as utilities and power, what areas of the plant demand those. As well as what capital improvements are needed throughout the various areas of collection and treatment. And so part of the reason for doing this is on the wastewater side of things, there's often there's items in most city ordinances, including Aberdeen's, that call for additional charges when an industry has excess loading of B O D, T S S, ammonia, and sometimes fog. And Aberdeen has fog. And so when we looked at that cost of service, we were able to look at what types of removals each of those areas of the treatment plant provides. And then develop the rates before you know. So looking at kind of with all the costs excluding pre-treatment. Um, what the monthly customer service charge would be, and then what the per thousand gallon treatment cost would be as well, looking at both not only volume, but the B O D, T S S, pneumonia. Um, Aberdeen also has a pre-treatment program that they are required to provide per state and federal guidelines. And so several industrial customers are part of that pre-treatment program. And we evaluated in the last study what those customers should pay, so that they're basically self-funding that program. And so that's where it was recommended, that there's a per thousand gallon charge. Um, that was implemented. So we looked at it with the cost of service and the cost of service in this study indicates that should go up to forty-four cents. So kind of putting that all together, where things were, or where things are with the current rates and where they should go per the cost of service. Monthly customer service charge should increase from thirteen sixty-five to seventeen twenty-seven. Usage rate should go up from four dollars and sixty to seventeen dollars, or seven dollars and seventeen cents. The industrial pre-treatment program should go from thirty-two cents to forty-four cents. And then the surcharge rates for B O D and T S S and ammonia should all increase just slightly. And that's per, um, those surcharges are per the ordinances. So again, goals were established, um, meeting with staff and determining what is desired and what is needed. And so one, funding the capital improvement plant projects, like we've talked about, eliminating the transfers. Um, also setting a target cash reserve goal. And again, staff started out looking at eighty percent, just that range of thirty to or forty percent to one hundred and thirty percent, eighty was about in the middle. And that's often where we see a lot of communities around that, you know, I would say around sixty to ninety percent. So eighty percent seemed like a good goal. But in looking at the rate increases needed, initially that was dropped down to seventy. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on where it was at the end. Um, trying to generate net positive income and part of that was with that twenty, thirty target in mind of being able to fund those future capital improvements. How can we at the end of the study, basically not be in the red, not be in the black, but just kind of break even at the end? One of the other goals was being able to develop that irrigation rate. Or not, sorry, not the irrigation rate, but being able to separate out residential, commercial, industrial customers. Just to be able to see on the wastewater side, we get into a lot of those ordinance required BOD and TSS charges. So if we can separate out an industrial and kind of see some of the demands they're placing on the system and their impact, it helps to be able to better recommend if you should have a separate industrial rate from commercial, because often those industries do place a higher demand on the system. Um, also wanted to exceed that coverage ratio as was done in the water study and try to implement the cost of service findings. So again, two rates were developed for the sewer side. Option one, which is recommended, was developed and that has the cost of service um, recommendations basically followed. So for the monthly customer surface charge, it's that, that's kind of a a smaller steady increase, placing more of the rate increase on the usage rate. The other thing that as rates were increased to try to meet that twenty thirty goal of that net zero end of year cash, um, we realized that reserves were building up quite high to try to meet that target. So it's like if you know something's coming that you're trying to save up for, you're trying to generate the cash and the savings needed to do it. Um, and so it's always concerning as well when reserves get really high cause I think that sometimes offers a bad perception to the public. They don't wanna see, you know, the city keeping money in reserves. And so one of the things we're coming out with what is a recommendation that's gonna put the city in, in a good place at the end of the study, but also allow them to reduce the cost of that upcoming east side sewer project is to use five million dollars in reserves and actually put that towards the project. That'll reduce the loan, it'll reduce the repayment amount. Um, and it'll, it'll meet a lot of the revenue goals of the study and put the city in a good place in twenty thirty on the sewer department. Um, for option two, we looked at more of a uniform rate increase. So the same increases apply to both the monthly customer charge and the per thousand gallon rate each year. And then again, using that five million dollars in reserves to reduce the cost of the east side sewer project.
Sorry, um, I back up just a little bit. I don't remember your exact phraseology you were talking about. Um, talking about um, distinguishing commercial um, customers versus residential customers on the sewer side. Um, based on an um, increased impact on from commercial. The, the impact you were discussing is that in quantities or impact on the system of actually having to treat something that's harder to treat or?
Both. And so on sewer, it's not so much the volume in the max state, but you think about the concentration of the wastewater. And the easiest way, if you wanna have separate rates for residential, commercial and industrial and be able to justify that and show that that's the most fair and equitable way to do it is to have separate classes where you actually can, you know, maybe even do some sampling of some of those, those wastewater is coming out of those and demonstrate that the concentration of the what we referred in the wastewater street, it's BOD, TSS, ammonia, if the concentrations of those parameters are higher than most of your typical wastewater, um, it can justify a higher charge. Now, there is a provision that the city has with the surcharges that we're gonna talk about where if those customers consistently discharge a strength that is above standard domestic, they are charged a per pound rate that they have to pay. But that's only the specific industries that are part of the pre-treatment pro- program where it's known that they are discharging a higher strength waste.
So here we can see those rates um, that we are proposing. You can see your current sewer rates here at the top and then option one and option two. And we were able to show the annual percent increases here on the same slide. So you can kind of see this all combined, where the option one implements those cost of service. Like Tanya said, you've got a higher increase on the usage rate versus the monthly charge. And you can see how that uh, affects the rates here. Your uh, usage fee goes from five twenty-five in twenty twenty-six up to nine dollars and five cents in twenty thirty. And then the monthly customer service charge would go from fifteen dollars and ten cents in twenty s- twenty-six to twenty-two dollars and seventy-five cents in twenty thirty. With option two, we had the same increase for uh, both fees and we're able to maintain that same increase throughout the study period for this option. So in twenty twenty-six, that per uh, per thousand gallon fee would be also five dollars and twenty-five cents. But increases to eight dollars and seventy cents in twenty thirty. And your monthly service charge would go up to fifteen fifty in twenty twenty-six, all the way up to twenty-five dollars and eighty cents in twenty thirty. And here's those surcharges that Tanya was talking about. Um, you'll see on here, there's only one set of rates here. We are proposing the same surcharge increases for either option. So you can see the twenty twenty-five rates at the top, including that uh, pre-treatment fee that Tanya had gone through with the cost of service. Um, and then how those are affected throughout the years. Most of these uh, were very close to the cost of service that Tanya had gone through. TSS um, will be impacted more with some of those proposed projects. And so that rate increase does need to be a little bit higher than the others in order to help fund those projects because of how those projects are affecting, you know, there's more TSS work that needs to be done for those projects. So that's why that rate is a little bit higher or that increase is a little bit higher. So here we can see how that affects the, the cash for the department. Again, that darkest color is the current rates as if we do not increase rates for the next five years. You can see how the cash decreases quite a bit by the end of the study period. And you can see with the two rate options, we are able to maintain positive cash um, throughout the study period. It doesn't look like it in twenty thirty, but that is that five million dollar capital contribution that Tanya had brought up. So you cash would really be about zero, but you're contributing extra money to a project. And so that's why those um, show the roughly negative five million. And here you can kind of see why. Here's your cash reserves. With those increases, your cash reserves are increasing at a pretty good rate. And we're getting up to roughly seventeen million dollars in twenty twenty-nine. And that's, that's really good reserves. So utilizing those five million dollars for that project brings your reserves back to a, a more average level, close to what you guys have seen in the past, but still has reserves to keep going for those projects. Onto the uh, bills, the cus- the charges between the different uh, types that we have talked about before. So here's that single user again. You're on, you're in the bottom third uh, of the other large cities in the state and those increases. You're still in the bottom half for those single family users. For your typical family, you have the lowest rate of the large cities in this state. And the rate increases would still put you in the bottom third. Same with commercial, you are.
But Tom is just gonna go fix it for a second there. He's gonna go use the restroom, I guess. While we're waiting for that, Jordan, I've got a question. If we've got a um, six million dollar water cash reserve and a ten million dollar wastewater cash reserve, why were we pulling money out of the uh, general fund to subsidize the um, function of these organizations rather than draw down on that reserve?
Historically, our um, special sales tax has subsidized the special projects related to water and sewer infrastructure. That's something we've built into our CIP for many years. It's not normal among other cities our size. And it's something that um, this plan would reduce going forward.
And then to put things into perspective about how many dollars are we talking respectively between the two?
Um, r- roughly a million to two million, depending on the year and the project.
Between both.
Total, yep. Usually the system reboots.
Or that zero doll- oops, thank you. Did everybody hear me before? Was it loud? Okay, alright. Um, by achieving that kind of net zero amount in twenty thirty, the idea is that we're building up to where we, the city needs to be on the sewer department to be able to repay those additional projects and the debt repayments that are starting. And so if you don't get up to that amount by twenty thirty, you won't have enough funds to repay the debt. And then going forward, because we've gotten up to that level, after that, the hope would be that unless significant capital improvements projects would come on, you could just do steady inflationary increases to be able to maintain things and then fund those capital needs. So hopefully that makes sense or provides some assurance that you're not gonna continue to build revenue um, in excess of like that with the proposed rates in future years.
Thank you.
I see Jessica and I, so I'm guessing the slide presentation will follow shortly, on the monitors anyway. There we go.
I'll ask this while we're waiting. Um, so for each one, you gave a recommended option. Um, what's the, what's the parameters for your recommendations? Like what's it? Why, why the one option over the other?
I think the driving factor between each of those is the first option for both water and sewer follows the recommendations of cost of service. And so it covers more of the necessary rate increase from the customers or in the way that it more fairly recovers costs from each, each class of customer.
You, you're saying it's, it's the most equitable for based on your recommended options?
Yes, based on evaluating the expenses and what's incurred and, and that cost of service really is defined as what is the cost of serving that customer class or how much revenue should that customer class be generating. So in reviewing that and where things are coming in, those options that are recommended, implement the findings.
Tanya, if I could add one more, one more item on that. If you look at that cost of service that Tanya said, when you look at the rate increases, pay attention to the difference between the base rate versus the commodity charge, the cost per thousand. And what you see like Tanya says, it, it puts more of that rate increase onto the usage. Which therefore then the higher users are gonna be paying slightly more because so it does, and one of the things that's been said here, um, both on the water side, is true on wastewater side as well, is that we build systems for average day, but then we have to, I don't wanna say overbuild, but we have to make things larger. At a water plant, we have to make things larger at an expense, both in the distribution system in town and the water treatment plant to be able to handle fire flow, to be able to handle heavy irrigation during the summertime. Rather than your water treatment plant producing four M G D of water during the winter, you may have to do eight, some days maybe even twelve. Right? So that three to one has an expense. Somebody has to pay for that and it's most fair that the people who are using that extract capacity are paying for it.
Sure, absolutely, yes. Yeah. And, and I, I know for myself and I, and I, I'm guessing I would speak for a number of the council people here is you, ju- the older community on fixed incomes, wh- what are we doing to make sure that th- there's just an absolute minimal impact to, to those people was the basis behind what I was asking. So. And that's one of the things that option one does is it tries to lessen the burden on those.
And that's one of the things I wanted to just bring up in relation to that. If you notice the percent increase for both options, water and sewer, option one has a lower percent increase on that monthly customer service charge. So when you're using a thousand, maybe two thousand gallons a month, that rate increase is gonna be less on a percentage basis than if you're a large commercial industrial customer.
Thank you. So for everyone online, we are going to uh, start back at the beginning of these um, essentially bill comparisons. Uh, this first one is that single user household, um, like we looked at for water. Um, you can see the Aberdeen current rate is in the bottom third and with these proposed increases, um, you're still in the bottom half. If you look at it, it's less than five dollars a month um, that those users would see as an increase. Next is that typical family residential user. Aberdeen's rate is currently the lowest compared to other major cities in the state. And the proposed rate increases would still have you in the bottom third. Oh, sorry, I will do that. I, I gotta do both of them. Making sure I'm doing it right. Okay. The next one is the typical commercial user. So again, Aberdeen's current rates are the lowest in comparison to the other cities in the state. And our, the proposed increases would still put you in the bottom third. And then we've got the typical large industrial customer. Again, I sound like a broken record. Aberdeen's is currently one of the cheapest in the state and with these increases, you'd still be in the bottom third. We are also for sewer going to look at the increases for some of those concentrations that Tanya had mentioned. So here is for BOD, um, your current is not the highest and we're not jumping up to the highest. We're making a minimal increase here. The next one is TSS. We are currently pretty average compared to everybody. Um, Mitchell, I think, has done a recent project, so theirs is, is quite a jump. And again, a minimal increase on this one. The next one is ammonia. There are not a lot of cities that do have this in their ordinances. But as you can see here, it is a minimal increase with the proposed rates. And the last one is for fog. And you guys are the lowest in this, in the state for the large cities and would continue to be there for this rate.
So before we, sorry, before we bring everything back together. That would pay forty-one dollars and thirty-five cents a month. In comparison to that EPA rate for affordability that we talked about earlier, that one and a half to three percent, that five thousand gallon customer at forty-one thirty-five would be point seven five percent of the median household income. So half of what is considered an affordable rate. So again, just a general indication that Aberdeen's rates are very affordable for those you know, lower residential. you know, lower residential fixed income customers. Although I know still there, there are customers that struggle, and it's tough. So it's not trying to, to not recognize that, but just saying generally as a guidance, when you look at the nation, Aberdeen's sitting very well for affordability.
So, um, can you remind me what does FOG stand for?
Absolutely. Fats, oils, and grease. We use so many acronyms, the BOD, the TSS. I tried not to go into details, but if you have any more questions.
So, the one customer that we've got that's metered is, I guess, probably relatively easy to track this information down for, but what about the other industrial users that are, find themselves, um, pushing, um, their ways through the same systems as dozens of other customers? How do you?
So the pre-treatment program customers are required to submit information on what their wastewater strength.
Paying the surcharge?
Yes, those are the only ones, and they're required to do additional testing. Set, your staff do have additional costs for monitoring that testing, helping confirm that testing. Um, in the past, historically, there were several industries that did pay those surcharges every month because their waste consistently was higher than standard domestic strength, and so they, they paid those fees. Those industries have since put in pre-treatment systems.
Sure.
And so they are, right now, you do not have any industrial customers that typically pay the surcharge fees, but it is something that's continuing to be monitored, um, to kind of verify that, or just measure the strength coming from those customers.
But Amanda, is it just two, or how many customers are doing pre-treatment? Five or six. Thank you.
So again, bringing everything together, we recommend water rate option one and sewer rate option one. Both are recommended to fund those necessary planned capital improvements, um, meet those long-term operating revenues, um, of seventy percent, or sorry, cash reserves of seventy percent of operating revenues, exceed that one point one coverage ratio requirement, and implement cost of service. So just as a general recommendation, kind of in closing things out and keeping kind of the future of, of rates and the needs of the city in mind, rate studies should be completed around every three to five years. We typically look at that five-year planning window. And so if not much is changing, you can have the study completed more at the tail end of it. If things are changing quite a bit, if additional capital improvement needs come up, costs change significantly, you might want to look at it closer to that three-year period, um, or when there's a large change, which is why we looked at again after just a year, through the number of changes for Aberdeen. Um, and then the other recommendation that was talked about was increasing those customer classes from probably two to four. Um, but that would go through, or, you know, there should be additional discussions with staff on feasibility and timing of that to make sure that implementing something like that is not burdensome. So with that, um, I'll open it up for any other questions at all that staff may have, and, or sorry, that the council may have.
All right, any questions for these ladies? Well, thank you. I think you've done a great job, and I guess we've, uh, got all of our questions out there for you, so now it's just a time to take a look and digest these numbers. Jordan had done a helpful little spreadsheet last time of the actual impact on a per customer basis, kind of based on water usage. I think that that would be uh, handy to, uh, update with some of these numbers and have a look at to, uh, to kind of see the, uh, average consumer's, uh, impact that it's going to have on, as, as it relates to the total bill that they pay to us. Um, but, uh, anyone else have anything? Well, thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you too for all your work on this. Excellent study. Thanks for your interaction with us and asking, answering all the questions, especially the ones I had. So thank you for all your time on that.
Thank you. It was a pleasure to work with all of you.
Very good. Well, that's that. So I appreciate it. Once again, we'll take a little bit of time to, uh, let people file on out, and then we'll have an executive session to talk about a contractual legal matter.